Roll call, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District one, Morsette.
Here.
District two, Yakub.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Teewinkle.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Vanslo.
Here.
Okay, first order of business is the public hearing on a request from Richard and Janet Stout to rezone 483 Stageline Road from R1, one-family residential to RM1, multi-family residential. Mr. Darnold? Is there, or is anyone here that would like to speak to that issue? Is there anyone here that wants to speak? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda, oh, we have to wait till 6:55, sorry. So now we'll wait for five minutes. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing request by Tim and Betty Caruso to rezone 811 First Street from R2, two-family residential or family district to OFC, Office District, and to amend the city comprehensive plan to change the 2030 master plan map, land use designation from single and two-family residential to neighborhood commercial. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that issue? Now is your time. Yes, sir. Oh, go ahead, Danny.
And just on Friday, November 15th, I received an email from Mr. Michael Wenhold's Department of Natural Resources Bureau of Watershed Management Regional Shoreline Specialist. Paraphrase DNR's comments, that the department's only comment regarding this request is to note that any future development on this property must meet the requirements of City of Hudson, St. Croix River Wild and Scenic Riverway and Shoreline Protection Overweight District Section 255-18, City of Hudson Municipal Code and the standards for the Lower Sync Coordinationals Scenic Riverway, Chapter 118, Wisconsin Administrative Code. Please note that these comments are in regard to shoreline zoning only and do not reflect applicable erosion control, waterway permitting, or other department regulations. Now you give Nancy a copy of the email for public record.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. If you could state your name and address and give us some information, please.
I'm Tom Rose, 801st Street. I live right across the street from this proposed project. And with a few reservations, I think it's a great idea to upgrade this property. It seems as though it's been, there's no improvements on this for the last 50 years or so, and it's a good opportunity to, assuming they have a plan for what they're going to do, to improve this property and for the neighborhood and the community. I think that it will help with our tax rolls, the improvements, of course. And also, I think, one of the reservations I do have is that if you were to go ahead and approve this, you should look at, do a comprehensive look at how parking for this particular site is going to affect that whole area. As it is right now, Norlake is kitty-cornered to that, and their situation is that over half of their employees are parking on the city streets as it is. Is this going to be the same situation? Are they going to have enough parking? Is the city going to do something for parking? But other than that, I think it's a great way to move forward, and I wish them the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this project or this proposed change? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The public hearing for, the public hearing on the operating fund will begin at 7:00. General Fund Operating Budget. Okay, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's any people present that would like to talk to the city council and about any item that is not on the agenda tonight, now is your time to come forward and speak to the council. So if there's anyone here that came to speak to the council tonight, now is your chance. Doesn't look like we have anyone. Consent agenda items. Madam Clerk.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of November 4th, 2013. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $1,329,116.41. Additional information is posted on the city's website and is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of three regular operators licenses for the period November 19th, 2013 to June 30th, 2015 contingent on payment of any outstanding debt that is owed to the city. And to approve the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used December 22nd, 2013 at the Hudson Hockey Association Alumni Hockey Games. Additional operator license application information is available in the clerk's office on request. To deny the operator license to Matthew James Smith due to Mr. Smith's history of alcohol-related violations. To approve the installation of pedestrian crossing signs on Grandview Drive at Stone Pine Avenue. To approve a Class B beer and Class C wine license for the Hudson Hockey Association Alumni Event on December 22nd, 2013. To approve an increase in municipal court costs from $28 to $38 for all violations on both traffic and non-traffic offenses. To approve the post-issuance compliance procedure and policy for tax-exempt governmental bonds dated November 18th, 2013. To place and file the EMS Commission Minutes of November 13th, 2013, the October 2013 Finance Officer's Report, the Quarterly Report of the Utility Director, and the Utility Commission Minutes of November 12th, 2013. That is all.
Move for approval.
Roll call.
Yakub.
Yes.
Vanslo.
Yes.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Teewinkle.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Morsette.
Trying to catch up here. Okay, Plank Commission. I got it. Consider, 8A is consider ordinance 10-13 an ordinance rezoning territory in the City of Hudson, 483 Stageline Road. Mr. Darnold.
Public hearing on this consideration was at 6:50 PM. No comments received. The Plank Commission recommends rezoning of the property at 43 Stageline Road, RM1, one-family residential district, RM1, multi-family residential district, as requested by Richard Stout. Ordinance 10-13 would make the rezoning effective. You have the option of having first reading tonight or consideration of suspending rules and acting on ordinance.
What's your preference?
Suspend rules.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Roll call.
Vanslo.
Yes.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Teewinkle.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Yakub.
Any discussion? Go ahead, and you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was wanting for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion, folks. Any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider ordinance 11-13 an ordinance rezoning territory in the City of Hudson, 811 First Street.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
There was a second. Roll call.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Teewinkle.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Yakub.
Yes.
Vanslo.
Yes.
Questions, comments?
Plank Commission does recommend approval of the request for Betty and Tim Carisel to amend the City of Hudson Comprehensive Plan, 2030 Master Plan, land zone, land use designation from single and two-family residential to neighborhood commercial and the rezone from R2, two-family residential to OFC, Office District, for the property at 811 First Street. Again, the public hearing was at 6:55. We had comments from Department of Natural Resources and Mr. Tom Rose.
I move for approval of ordinance 11-13.
Second.
Sure, was it Tom Irwin? Okay, okay. Thank you. There was a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What was the parking plan?
Parking plan is to provide parking. They do have to comply because it's OFC. They do not have a, there's no discretion as far as provision of off-street parking. They will have to provide the amount of off-street parking per the square footage of office areas that they'd be proposing. So the proposal at this point is to propose off-street parking on the west side on, which basically is a former railroad track bed.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Danny. Finance Committee, consider request, item 9A, consider a request for an additional wage increase for paramedic and issue sheets. Chief is here to explain herself, and it was a 2-2 vote in Finance. Chief, you're on.
Hello, where is it from that?
Why?
I don't know.
We were, didn't we treat you pretty good?
What's that?
Didn't we treat you okay?
It was all right. I got a drink of water afterwards. Just water? Not that I can say, anyway, so. Yes, so I brought up in Finance meeting, and it was something that was discussed at the EMS Commission meeting to try and get our paramedics up to the base wage that they should be at for right now. I did a study of all the surrounding services, both Minnesota and Wisconsin, and then also found an article in a JEMs magazine that just came out 2013, October, which is a world national EMS magazine, for a wage study for, divided up into regions, is it kind of how population works, how each service is done, kind of regions tend to kind of follow each other. In the region that we're in right now, we're actually behind. And I would like to get the medics up to the point where they should be right now. It's kind of a tough subject, obviously, with, you know, the 2% raise coming up January 1st, but it's something that I feel that the medics deserve to be at, to just get them to that base point. We've been kind of behind for a while, and I would like to get us up to that point. And I will answer any questions that you would like. Just don't make me cry.
Not stressful. Questions for the chief?
And I should clarify, this is only for the full-time medics. This is not for the part-time medics. This is for the full-time medics that do additional duties on top of their full-time medic duties.
We had a wage adjustment in...
Certification wage adjustment.
January.
March?
It took, no, it took effect, I believe, later on, April 1st or May 1st.
March.
That's when people got their certifications done.
Correct. That was the first time it was implemented. You're right. It was early in the year that we approved it.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, absolutely, that's...
I was listening at Finance. I think Tim, to agree with Alan, with the situation of the other departments and how we are going to not say no to the other departments as they come to us for wage increases. I know that we've been, I mean, we've had many situations, just with the Police Department, one flying wage increases and we said no. So I'm technically hesitant to do wage increases outside the 2% right now because of the fact that, you know, it's a fire, you know, bound to a fire, I remember, police and Public Works, and I can, I can go down, I can see things start, no lineup. So, I understand what you were saying, Rich, about base, it's just I have a concern about how this will roll out with the rest of the city employees, so.
Yeah, and my position on this is that it appears, based on the information that Kim's provided, that the base salary for these people is below what would be expected in this type of job for the skills required. And so it's, I'm not looking at it as a wage increase, I'm looking at it as an adjustment to the base salary to get them where they belong. And it's a little bit different for me from that standpoint. So they're getting wage increases on a base that is below what we should be paying, and so therefore I would like to adjust it to get the base pay where it belongs.
Can I ask, Kim, are any of those employees on full-time benefits?
Yes.
And retirement?
Yep.
All of them are, yes.
So my answer to your que, or to your comment is, none of the benefits were compared in addition to the wage benefits, which I think need to be compared to what's being offered to the other paramedics.
It's a legitimate point.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
What is the EMS Commission or Board?
The Commission voted in favor of it.
Okay.
But our representative was not at the...
I was unable to be there.
Was not there.
Which, if I had voted no, I would have been outnumbered, anyway, so it still would have come out of Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we know this $19 per hour? Do we know that that's the going rate, or?
That's kind of the low end of the average.
Well, I mean, it's 17 to 21.
17 to 21.
That's New Richmond, right?
That's New Richmond, yep. River Falls is going to be going to a career model, so their starting full-timers will be at 20, above 20 to start. And they, out of all the services, are probably the most comparable when it comes to that because they do just about as many calls as we do. Their size, as far as how spread out they are, is comparable to ours. They really are the comparable ones to us, and not because I want the raise by any means and not because I think that that'll help us, but they really are comparable to what we do.
Do you know their health benefits at River Falls?
About the same as ours. And I had Jeff on the phone with us, or with me, just this last week, and we were talking about all that stuff. And he was...
Do you remember, Devin?
Retirement would be the same. I don't know what their health insurance plan is. I, that I can't tell you right off the top of my head.
I thought we did a comparison with theirs.
I don't.
Okay.
So we don't know what next year's pay increase will be?
Not at River Falls, no.
I mean, here.
2%.
Well, that is part of the budget that has not been approved yet.
I mean, finish.
Oh, 2015, no.
No.
And I'm just saying, if it were to be 2%, that would bring the pay up to 1923. I think we have to be careful, we don't set a precedent. Kim, don't be mad, I mean, but...
We did make a wage adjustment earlier in the year, and the one that we just made for the EMS chief was one that was planned by the EMS Commission. I think we need to stick with the 2%.
At 1923 with this adjustment, or is by virtue of a 2%?
If we didn't do, if we just did 2% this year, and if it weren't 2% next year, I'm just saying, it would be at 1923.
The original proposed adjustment is 14 cents an hour.
On top of the 2%.
Before the 2%.
On top of the 2%.
It's in addition.
Which would put them at a total of $19.
And it's not the 14 cents.
Okay.
That's what, you know.
Right.
It's not.
But their revenue that they generate independently would cover this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is the difference with water, sewer.
That's right.
They have, you know, they're, they have a revenue source, your only source is the tax base. But that is a difference.
So, but let me just...
Be careful how we do that, because two years ago, they were losing money.
I understand, I just want to know.
They were losing money.
I appreciate that.
And...
And their revenue source, that generates for other, they use that for other things within EMS, don't they? Other supplies, I don't know what... We pay for all of our own supplies. Right, so...
But, but if we use that analogy, then, when Danny's department, when there's, you know, more permits that are issued, do we give, do we say, gosh, we're up $70,000 in permit revenue, those funds should be available to...
I understand, and I was just trying to clarify that it's not coming from the general fund.
It is coming from the general, well, it's operating of the, everything, go ahead.
Her department is a enterprise fund, thank you, Kathy. The, the city contributes so much per capita, so what the city contributes to make that fund run is from the general fund.
Okay, yeah.
Her, her department runs separately from the general fund, and you, you, the, same with the library. You make a contribution to it, and then they, they're responsible for their budget.
But they're city employees.
They're considered city employees, right?
She founded in her budget, in the $1,400 a year, and our, the municipal partners have agreed to that wage increase. So that's why I'm kind of in favor for it. And I agree with Rich's...
So if they agreed to a dollar increase, would we do it?
Hmm, no.
So, it gets back to principle, and what's our procedure, I guess, going forward.
Take it step by step. You take it case by case. I mean, that comes up all the time. We set a precedence, we set a precedence. In the private sector, and correct me if I'm wrong, you take it case by case, merit by merit, you have the policies in place. If it's about policy, then it's our fault, we don't have the policies in place. And like it's been said before, we've brought it up many times to put a policy in place, and we have not done it.
As far as evaluations or...
All of that, merit increases, evaluations, bonuses. Al, you brought it up two years ago, you said, bonuses. It's been...
Two or three times it's been looked at by different councils since I've been here, as far as how to do that.
And nothing comes.
When I first came, it was done, for the department heads, it was done on merit, and then they got away from that, and then they looked at it again, but...
So to blanketly cover everything, I just, I dismiss. Oh, I'm sorry.
But Randy, then you're saying, if we're, you can't say...
Well, I can say anything.
No, you can say whatever you want, yes. But what I'm saying is, I couldn't in good conscience say, let's, let's give them this, this increase, and then if Public Works asks for the same thing, look at it and say possibly not, because I think Public Works Department works hard. They've, they've, the storms of the last summer, they worked above and beyond. You know, we have our Police Department who works hard, so we have our volunteer firefighters who come in, so it's like, you're, it'll have to be an across-the-board thing. I agree with Lori, we have to stand on principle here, and, and we look at our budget every year, we give raises as appro, as, as we see appropriate, and what we can afford to give. But my question is, and I guess this is more for you guys, I don't know the salaries of everybody, but is everybody else's salary comparable to what the national average is or what they should be at? And ours aren't, as far as EMS goes.
Definition of what should be at is...
That's the thing, is that I, yep.
That is a very subjective.
Yep.
If, if I'm a, if I'm a department in this, I would want to use the highest comparison I can use.
Yep.
And then if I'm one that doesn't want to pay anything, I'll go down to the bottom and say, well, we can find this number. I think that, that isn't, there isn't an ideal thing that says this is exactly what these people should be paying.
I, I don't know for a fact, I meant, I, for several of the department, as we are below River Falls. I mean, I can't say that per person, but...
Okay, but, that being said, and I just had this discussion with, with Marty, we have very little state funding that we get. Where River Falls gets $2 million, you know, Chippewa Falls gets, I don't remember, 3.1 million. We get, what, $195,000?
169.
So 169,000 compared to these other municipalities, which is why they can pay a little more. We can only pay what we have. So I don't like comparing, I don't, I have trouble comparing to the other municipalities when we have such, when there's such an unbalanced funding source from the state.
Well, I think we want to try and be as competitive as we possibly can in our wages.
Of course, but as we can.
Yep.
And we can't compete at 169,000 to 3.1 million, or 2 million. We can do the best we can with what we have, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
I, I don't think it's unusual to take a job-grade wage analysis to determine if you're paying appropriately or not, and those are on a case-by-case basis. It's not a salary increase. It's a, it's a job-grade evaluation, which says you're paying appropriately for the skills that are required for that position.
And Rich, do you feel comfortable with what you got? That, that, that is a reasonable expectation of this particular information that was provided to us?
Based on the information that I've been given, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Kim, can you ask, answer me, particularly, what was the impetus or behind the 14 cents an hour? Is it coming from your staff, or you just wanted to?
It's me.
Okay.
And I was the same way, you know, and part of it was because I was in their shoes, and I know what it's like to have to work two full-time jobs, and I, like I said, at Finance, this isn't going to get them to the point where they can buy a new house. But this is at least getting them to that point where they, next year, when they get their 2% or whatever, 1% or whatever, but they're on that level playing field that they should be at to start getting those increases. And we've worked so hard to get even to where we are now, and that was based off the certifications, which absolutely I believe that they deserved, and now just get them to where they should be. And we've been behind, and now we're starting to move forward. And I know that there were increases over the last couple of years. I, I get it, I understand it, but at the same time, we're only getting them up to where they should be. It's something that they deserve, they're dedicated. We're lucky we have the people that we have here. We've got people, our full-timers right now have an average of like 60 to 70 years between the four of them, of experience. If we lost any single one of them, we'd be starting over from scratch. And I'm not saying that to, you know, by any means put a guilt trip on, but I'm saying we have the experience here, they've been here dedicated for that long, that why not getting them, get them up to the playing field that they deserve to be on?
They haven't been here with the city, they've been in the profession.
No, 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 no. But we do have one paramedic that's been with the city for 20 years, we've got another one that's been here for 15 years. The other two have been here for two years, and they've had 10 years, 10 to 15 years on top of it for experience. How much?
I'm going to move to approve the 14 cent wage increase.
Is there a second? I'll second.
How much, what's the breakdown with municipalities, because it's a joint EMS, how much comes from the city, from the town?
Neil, do you know that right off the top of your head, the percentage?
It's population-based, so it's 13, 8, 4, 2, probably about, little, we're a little less than 50%.
48%.
Probably a little bit more than half, because the town of Hudson has almost 9,000 people.
The village is like 3,500, and it's one-third of Troy.
Right. So we're probably, probably, I think we're shade over half, we're funding.
Okay. Any other comments, thoughts, questions?
I'm just trying to, you know, I, I agree with Rich on the point of bringing them to the correct base. I'm just trying to figure out if this $19 is a nationally known base, if it's just from this article out of the magazine, or exactly where it's coming from, because I don't picture these paramedics being overly joyed for 14 cents an hour.
No, and they're not, but it's getting them up to the level that they should be.
But I mean, that's just an arbitrary number to get them to 19.
Yep, and technically, even based off of the article that I had, they're below still, but they're up in the bracket.
But is that gonna, a year from now, are they going to say, we're so far below everyone?
No. I mean, this isn't them coming to me, this is me coming to you by any means.
No, I understand.
And they're going to be dedicated, I know they are. But why not get them up to the, to where they should be for what they're doing at the same time?
I'm just looking at River Falls, and Baldwin, and, you know, the surrounding community in Richmond.
Right.
That's all I'm looking at.
Yeah, and I...
We don't have the benefit package. I think retirement's the same.
Retirement is, yes.
But I mean, our health insurance is.
I don't know what.
I don't know how they compare in the health insurance.
I know New Richmond is cheaper just because they went to an outside agency. That's the only way they could get their employees up is because they couldn't compete with the city benefits. So they got their own plan on their own.
So New Richmond is 17 to 21.
Yep, and most of them are already up past 20 just because of, that's where they were when they went full-time then.
Okay, so I mean, the middle of that is 19, is 1886. See, here's, here's the thing, and I, I see what you're getting at current, it's not the 14 cents. It's by doing this, this body is just saying, we're open to.
Negotiations.
Negotiations and any department to come to us with any range of studies that they've done. And we're going to, you know, we're going to pick winners and losers and.
They have come to us and we've said no.
So that's all I'm cautioning, you know, the committee, it's, it's not the expenditure and.
And I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the other people coming to us on a case-by-case basis and evaluating it and trying to make a decision on it.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to have it done in September, not December or November, late December when we're trying to approve a budget. I, I think coming this late is, is too late in my opinion, but again, that's, that'll be up to you folks to decide.
So what we're saying is we're, the city will set a rate for pay adjustment and then it's plus or minus.
Whatever you negotiate with this.
It'll be plus whatever any department wants to negotiate with the council. Okay. I'm not signing on for that.
Any other comments, questions? We have a motion on the floor to approve this and we have a second. Is there any other discussion that you, that you people want to talk or any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
No.
Can I show our hands, four? Against? I'm against, motion fails. Thank you, Kim. Next item on the agenda, Public Safety Committee, consider recommendation for farm feral stray to launch the trap neuter and release program. Catherine? I think you were asked by.
Well, yeah, I, I got the information from Public Safety and from the police chief about what the proposal is, so let's just talk about that. My understanding is the proposal is to, well, let me back up. There's a feral cat colony that lives basically on the city property off Hanley Road is what I understand. They stray and go over into the Hanley Place Apartments, it's a problem. And the police chief does acknowledge or agree that feral cats are a problem in the city. So what this organization or group of people, I don't know what they are and that's part of, you know, the inquiry here. But is proposing to implement this trap neuter and release method of managing feral cats as opposed to trying to eliminate them. Vacc, you know, when they trapped, they vaccinate and release on the city, for the population on the city property. And the purpose of my memo was just to kind of, this is somewhat similar to the deer control program that the city entered into with a group of people, different methodology. But the city did have an agreement to have that program on a pilot-type basis. So that's what I understood, that would be a reasonable approach if this is what the city wants to do. I did, you know, as far as, in which case you'd need to, you know, find out what their organization is. Is it just a group of individuals? Is it some sort of, you know, just find out a little more, what is their training, expertise, so forth? In that deer management program, they did provide liability insurance, you know, all those types of things are what the city, I think, should be looking at. In addition to which, I did also talk with your, the city's animal control officer. I, you know, have no expertise in this area, but I think you should look to her for her comments and I tried to put them in the memo. The difficulty with this is that it's a long-term management program. And so you want to have, I mean, the city could do it for as long or as short as it wanted to if it decided to go ahead. But that is the method of managing these cat colonies is long, over the long term. Having said that, there is no other solution. From my understanding, there isn't really a solution to this. They, there are people drop off cats or they become, that's not my knowledge base, but I understand from the police chief that they are a problem. And from these apartment, people feed them and they just start, there's basically wild cats living in the city causing problems. So I, that's, you know, I don't have a, you know, this is a policy issue for the council. I don't have an opinion one way or another whether this is a good way to manage and so forth. I just tried to point out the issues in my memo and the types of things you should look at in your, if you decide to proceed in an agreement. My understanding is that this group of individuals or whatever would be paying for it. That was similar to the deer management program, except in this, there is, you know, you have to trap the animals. You have to get them neutered and vaccinated and so forth. So there are ongoing expenses to managing them this way. My understanding is this group is not looking for city funding of this, but they would do that. I don't know if that's over the long haul or just the short-term. So those are just question, I think more information needs to be obtained from, you know, about how they plan to operate the program. The other thing I often provided you was the Minneapolis ordinance. That, when I reviewed it, it looked like a quite a fair amount of reporting and management and oversight. And I don't know if that's typical, it's just an ordinance that was recently adopted by the city of Minneapolis. Mind you, they have a whole department devoted to animals and so, anyway, I just think you need more information. But it's something you can certainly look into and do, especially on city property, you're in control of the city property, so.
Can I speak on it?
Sure.
Okay, so when they came to public safety, it was just Rich and I. And I think we were both very hesitant when, on this. They gave a very well presentation as to how, how this plays out and it is handled. There will, there is no city funds used. From my understanding, there wouldn't, there would never be city, I shouldn't say never, you never say never. But their, city funds being used in the future is not something that we're foreseeing. They would be trained, there, there is, Tanya? Tanya, she, she would be in, she has a whole program that she, that they do out of various counties in the state already. I think Pope and, throw me a bone.
Pope, Burnett, Washburn, Barron and St. Croix.
Yes, so this is not, we're not remaking the wheel here, they've been doing this in other counties. And they would, there would be, there is a group of people that are willing to be, to be trained and learn exactly how to trap, trap the cats. And it is a program, it is like the deer reduction program, except there's a few differences in that. The, the trapping process is, is very selective, it's very, it's very, it's, it's meticulous. I mean, they, they don't, the cats want to be fed for a few days, then they have the traps out. There's a specific food they use to trap the cats. Yes, their tips of their ears get, get marked with that so they know that they've already been given their shots and been spayed or neutered. If they're kittens, they, and they're still able to be tamed, they, they send them off for adoption. So some of these cats actually can have homes and usually the older cats eventually, they're going to pass away. So there is a reduction process that, it will reduce the feral cat problem. And I think Public Safety's been looking at the feral cat issue for a few years now. We did when Randy was chair, we did once before when I was chair. I think, like you said, this is the only solution to reducing the feral cat situation. And I, I think it's a very well thought-out program that actually could be very beneficial for the city at, at no cost. The only thing that, the only sticking point they had were to, was the manager, the manager at Hanley Place and El Chief Jensen was going to go talk to, to him about allowing this to take place. So, and I know that it would be considered on city property, I'm not sure. I know they don't have liability insurance and I don't know if that's something we're going to be concerned about or not. But then we'd have to look at, or they would have to look at the possibility of getting permission from private property nearby, but.
Yeah, well, the city has nothing to say about what private property owners do want, except to the extent, actually, I shouldn't say that because under current city ordinances, and maybe they need to be updated, all cats are required to be licensed, they're not supposed to run at large. And harboring a cat, feeding, providing shelter, caring for them as, under this management program, I think they would be considered to be harboring a cat so that ultimately, if this is going to be a program that people can do on their own private property even to deal with the cats, I think the city would need to look at changing its ordinances.
I don't know if, I don't know if it'd be harboring a cat because they would just simply be trapping the cat and then it'd be taken off. There's.
I think that, aren't they planning on feeding them?
No, 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 they don't feed them on a consistent basis. People outside are feeding them right now, which is the problem.
Should we let her talk?
They're, they're, they're a controlled feed and there's a veterinarian in town who's willing to handle all the needs of the cat they catch. So, just.
Can we have her?
I don't care.
The expert, if you will, I don't know. I think that's what you're saying.
My name's Tanya Borg. And I live in Centuria, Wisconsin. And as we were saying, we run a trap neuter return program for farm feral and stray cats in Burnett, Washburn, Polk, Barron and St. Croix counties. Farm feral and stray is the only trap neuter return program in the Northwest Wisconsin counties at this point right now. And you may already know that, you know, the cat is the most popular pet in America. There are 86 million cats in homes right now. And they estimate that there are as many free-roaming cats. That's a lot of cats in the United States. As a matter of fact, a University of Wisconsin Wildlife Ecology Professor, Stanley Temple, did a study in 1995, so this is almost 10 years ago. And he conservatively estimated that there were 1.4 million cats just in Wisconsin. Now, Best Friends Animal Society contracted with a company called Dunham Associates to see if we could, if they could figure out how to narrow this down to a community number so that we had a better feel for that. And they did, they came up with the feral, fiscal feral cat evaluator. And for North Hudson and Hudson combined, we, the estimate is about 800 cats that are out in our communities that don't actually belong to anybody. And these cats are procreating and causing more kittens and more kittens. So that estimate of 1.4 million may be rather low from that long ago. So what we, what we do know is that these cats are pretty much everywhere. They're between the apartment buildings on Aspen Drive, there's a huge community there. They're in the woods behind Cooley Road, behind the Aguave kitchens and the restaurants in that area. And they're in the sewers on Hanley Road and that's why we're here today is to talk about, they live in the sewers. These cats deserve better. So what we're asking for tonight is that the city council consider giving us permission, our organization, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, to supply a feeding station and there would be regular feeding by the caregivers that would continue for these cats. And shelters, because living in the sewers is just not, that's not good. So we would have donated erected feeding station and housing units for them. If we could put them on the property that's behind the garages at the Hanley Senior Apartments. Nearby caregivers are going to continue giving the food and water. So these cats are not taken out and found places to stay. There are so many cats and as I was mentioning at the safety committee, these, most of these cats have come from the farms. The farmers don't span their cats, they are producing these cats, you know, at, at a certain rate. They're even starting to call us and ask us for help because these cats are returning back to them. So the circle has gone around, you know, they come to the towns because they've been adopted, they've been surrendered, abandoned and now they're being dropped off at the farms. So we need to stop this, we need to stop the kittens that are being born. We know that this is a long-term project, we know that it's going to be 15 or 20 years. However, one of the things that we want to be able to do is, once St. Croix County has a humane society in place, then this project can become a part of the St. Croix Animal Friends Humane Society. This is the goal. A lot of place, humane societies across the country have a trap neuter return program as part of their service. Unfortunately, we don't in these five counties. So eventually, that should be in, something that we can change and have them take that over, the same thing with the other counties. And St. Croix Animal Friends has been very supportive of the program and they've helped us. They've been great, so I know that they will do this going forward. The, in the memo from the city attorney, the concerns that were mentioned, the long-term sustainability of the program, that'll be addressed by training and transferring to St. Croix Animal Friends. Like I said, they've been an ongoing advocate. Funding sources come from places like Maddie's Fund, PetSmart Charities, Best Friends Animal Society, PetCo. These are ASPCA, these are all large national private organizations that have specific funds just for free-roaming cats because every large national humane organization realizes that TNR is the only way to correct this problem. That and the ongoing education for our kids so that they don't repeat this problem in the future, which I'm sure that they won't because they are very, very willing and they really understand the problem. Even the Future Farmers of America kids, it's just amazing. So I've been, been pretty lucky to be working with them. The public health concerns, there, I think you have a handout from Allicat Allies that talks about the public health issues as far as parasites are concerned. Deborah Ackerman, who is a PhD Associate Professor of Epidemiology at UCLA, says, and I quote, "There's simply no evidence to back up these claims that they are a health risk to people." One of the things that we do recommend for our feral cat caregivers is to give a daily dose of, a preventative for parasites because they do prey on small mammals and they're going to have parasites, but it is controllable. We do it with our own pets, we can do it just as easily for feral cats. And yes, they, Kathy's right, they do roam, they're not going to stay right on that property. But if they're spayed and neutered, they're not going to be out looking for mates, traveling 10 miles, they can travel as far as 10 miles. They are free-roaming animals, they are going to do that. Once they've got a regular food source and security in housing, they're not going to go as far. Having that dedicated feeding area and timeframe is going to reduce the numbers of skunks, raccoons, you know, whatever else are coming for that food. So that's something that has to be worked out with the caregivers and they'll understand that as we go forward. And then finally, Kathy's right too, the feral cats have been fed at the Hanley location for years. Evidently, it's been eight, six, eight years. The cats are living in the sewer and the kind of person who is compassionate enough to care for these cats shouldn't feel that they can't care for them, otherwise they're going to lose their home. That was what the impetus that we came here to try and prevent that. So just to summarize, we've been in operation for two years now. We've received two grants, one from, from national welfare organizations to promote TNR. We have several colonies, about half a dozen that are regularly monitored. We've adopted out more than 450 kittens, excuse me, we've spayed and neutered more than 50, 450 cats to date and fostered and adopted out 52 kittens just this year. So it, it does work, the program does work. And we are here for the long term and we will convince our other Northwest counties that this is the program to implement and then we will help them to do this because our cats don't recognize county lines, they're going to be coming across the county lines. So we need to educate everyone. And also know that more than 80% of the people that were asked by the Nielsen Company, and that's the one that does the Nielsen television ratings, that these people in our communities believe that these cats deserve to live. So trap and kill is not the way to go. People don't want that, they want to utilize trap neuter return and we're here to help with that. Any questions that I can, can cover?
One of the questions there, or one of the comments in the city attorney's mail was your insurance, you have no insurance, is that correct?
At this point, we don't, but it is something that I have a insurance representative looking into.
Okay.
And other TNR groups to see, you know, how they've handled this. So I mean, it is something that we can do, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I need to clarify something from what I understood in public safety. When you say you feed them constantly, it's a controlled feed from what I understand though.
When we do the trapping, it is a controlled feed.
Right, we're not, right, right now it's not a controlled feed, they're just being fed randomly, which is what allows them to keep coming back and growing and, and but the controlled feed is how you start to control the population.
Right, well, it's, someone is out feeding them on a daily basis right now.
Right.
We have several people.
Right, just.
But when we trap, we are going to stop, ask the caregiver to stop feeding so that when we set up the traps, we will actually have success. Then we bring them in.
I think what she's asking is on a daily basis, with the, the problem with the food being put out and left out overnight, the animals that it's drawing.
Right.
What we teach the caregivers to do is, we build a feeding station for them, we teach them to put smaller amounts of food out in the morning. They then go check it after a three-hour period, whatever is left is taken in. So no food should be left out overnight to draw in the kind of animals that we might present.
This is what I was trying to get clarification on.
Right, yeah.
This is what I was trying to explain.
Okay, sorry.
Good.
Perfect.
But when they're not being fed, they're, they easily feed themselves with other things, you know, creepy, you know, mice.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Let them.
Which is why we have.
They're good eaters.
Birds?
Birds.
A lot of the mice.
Yes.
Just clarification, you said on long-term sustainability, it will be transferred to the St. Croix Friends, can you explain that a little more?
Well, St. Croix Animal Friends is building a shelter, humane society shelter in just south of 94 and Roberts area for. in just south of ninety-four and Roberts area for.
Yeah, I am familiar with that.
For the county. And each county that we're talking about here, the five counties, each have their own humane societies. And typically, your humane society is the one who runs a TNR program. Because they are responsible, they, their mission is to take care of companion animals. However, many of them have not come up to speed with TNR and that's why we decided it was time. I've worked for a vet for twenty years and I saw the changes. People coming into the clinic and telling me they're seeing all of these cats and kittens and they wanted to know what to do about it. That's when I did my research, and Allicat Allies.
And is there a timeframe on building that shelter? And, I mean, and getting the St. Croix Animal Friends up and running with a actual program and facility?
Yeah, I was hoping one of them would be here tonight, but I, I believe that they are working on their capital campaign, but I don't know how long that may be.
So you don't really know how long you as an organization would be, need to be carrying out this program?
But we have volunteers in St. Croix County here, more coming on. Every time we have a fundraiser, we, we gain a few more volunteers. People love these cats and they want to do the right thing for them. Trapping and spaying and neutering them is the right thing.
How long have you been doing this?
It's been two years now. I was, we started out as a program underneath a, another organization from the cities. Just because we weren't sure quite how we were going to put everything together. So it was nice to be under their umbrella as a fiscal agent. But now we have our, our five oh one C three and we're going to help Wisconsin.
I'm going to move for approval of this program.
A second.
I've got a question is, can, can we make an agreement similar to the deer management agreement we have without changing our ordinances?
Well.
I mean.
I mean, the ordinances talk about harboring unlicensed animals. I mean, harboring I think is providing food, shelter, care. And that's what this program is designed to do. But I don't think they envision licensing these cats. And so that's why, what I was thinking is for a, I mean, to try it on a pilot program basis on the city property. So that this population, you know, this care and management program could be provided to this population. And then you can decide whether you want to, you're satisfied that it's helping and you want to change those ordinances. Because I think right now if you're harboring an animal, giving it food, shelter, and care, you have to have that animal licensed. And I'm certain you don't want to be responsible for licensing all those animals. It doesn't make sense.
And we hope that feral cats, like Mary said with the ear tip, that those are, are feral cats or community cats, they would be an exception. I, I am curious if I can ask a question. I didn't, I haven't looked this up, but how many cats do you have licensed?
Well, I did ask that question. I think it was like, I mean, fifty or, I don't remember the number. No, it's, no, I'm, I'm certain it's, I did ask that question, it's.
It's a handful.
Well, it seems to me that we're, we're dealing with something that if we continue to allow the population to grow without some kind of control, that we're going to just continue to see cats at large traveling back and forth. It's, it's just chasing the cat population. But if we all start to participate, then, then you see some real benefits and control from this type of program.
And I define harboring, I guess, differently. Because they're not gonna, I mean, once they catch them, they get them taken care of and, and whatever they need to get done, whether it's neuter and whatever, and then they release them. So harboring is for, to me, a day.
Well, but, okay, the people who are, I know there's been problems with individuals in homes feeding stray cats. And we have an ordinance that against that, to feed.
That's what I thought, but I was told we don't.
If you're harboring them, feeding them, caring for them, and they're hanging around your house, you need to license them. That's what the ordinance requires right now. And that is inconsistent with what this organization is proposing. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying if, I think, if you want to allow this on a citywide basis, first of all, I don't know that most of the people who are feeding are doing all the other kind of caring. You know, I'm not sure how it works, I just don't have the information on citywide. This was proposed as, hey, we know they exist.
Yeah, the reason why they're here is because they're not caring for them. They're just throwing their scraps out and, and these cats are growing, the population is growing.
I think they're going to continue to do that.
Well, that's what we're trying to stop in, in some ways. They're, that's why we have the chief going to Hanley Place to talk to these people who are feeding them, to ask them to stop feeding them so that they can start doing the control feed so we can trap them.
Is that what you're going to be telling people not to feed them?
Yes.
Well, not, not in the long term.
No, but.
Just to do the trapping and the spays and neuters. And then we bring them back to their caregivers because these cats have territories. If you take them someplace else and just drop them off out at a farm in the country, they just scatter, they don't know where they are. We've, we are investing sixty-five dollars per cat to getting these cats fixed. We want them to be continued to be cared for by the caregivers and our volunteers.
And are the caregivers, now that, I was thinking the caregivers are your volunteers, but you're saying the caregivers are just the people now who are feeding them, not doing any of the other kind of vaccinating or.
Right. Many times they are.
So it is inconsistent with the ordinances we have right now.
We've got, our ordinance prohibit killing deer in the city and we kill deer in the city. So how did we get around that?
Under that, we had an agreement. And they were specifically accepted so as to keep the deer population in check.
And that's my question, then why can't we make an agreement with these people to do what they're doing without changing the ordinances?
Well, that's, I, I agree with that, except to the extent that those hunters just basically go out, they get permission from private property owners. They do it during a certain time period and they're done. This is much more comprehensive in some ways because people will be allowed to continue to feed stray cats. No one is going around continually hunting deer in the city.
Oh, but they're feeding them.
Yes, and that is what has been against the ordinance. So, I mean, that can be changed, but the.
It seems like we need to change it. I mean, if, if you're right, like a twenty-seven percent of Americans have cats. There's a few unlicensed cats in Hudson.
More than a few.
Right, hundreds.
Dogs too.
It seems like we should try to at least, I don't know, either with a separate agreement or within our ordinance or a combination of both, try to participate in the controlling of feral cats. I mean.
I totally, I don't disagree. The only question in my mind is, the way it was presented to me is, can they do this on city property? And certainly on city property, you're in control of that. And you could decide, yes, let's try this on city property before we amend our ordinances to, you know.
I think that makes the most sense, before we amend all of our ordinances and.
That gives you a chance to at least review it, understand how it works, make adjustments, and know how to amend the ordinances.
Are your, your motion?
I made a motion to, to approve this, I'll, I'll have it on a, for a one-year trial basis.
I was going to ask that question, what kind of timeframe for us to know if it's?
And are you going to include insurance?
Well, I think you, what should happen, to be honest, is I should prepare an agreement for you. I can get more information about the program, what it entails. The agreement we had with the deer people was pretty specific on how they would manage, you know, do these hunts. They had the waivers attached to the contract. And that way you can see a package and you can know really what, what you're doing.
Yep, Denny?
Part of this discussion hasn't taken place yet is the physical characteristics of the city parcel. It's a stormwater retention pond. We have steep slopes, three to one slopes on both sides, which basically go up pretty much to property lines on the east and west sides. They do have access off of Hanley Road to the city property. But to gain the west access along the tree lines where they're potentially going to trap, they would have to get on private, I'm not talking in regards to, I'm just trying to put the issue out from the city property. So almost, they almost need to get a permission from Hanley Place to be able to get onto the property, to access the city property. Otherwise, the only access to the city property is off of Hanley Road. You have a level area of about twenty feet and you get into the stormwater pond. Also, the characteristics of the stormwater pond, that's very rough graded. We don't have, so there's always that potential that somebody could trip, fall, gaining access to our city property. So from the time the question came to me, who owns the property? I commented that I can't believe the city will not ask for a liability waiver for anybody that puts, gains access for this program to our city property.
I had one question, does that fill with water, the drainage basin?
Typically it would drain, but it could temporarily for a twenty-four hour to forty-eight hour period hold water. Typically, we'd have not seen it probably much more than a few feet deep. It's pretty much a very porous soil or, or goes down system quickly. But yes, is there a potential, absolutely.
And we addressed that in safety. Danny was at safety, we addressed all that with the liability waiver. We asked the question about snow, what, what if we get two, you know, twenty inches of snow? You know, these traps are, they can be pulled in and out. If it fills with water, they can be pulled in and out, they don't trap them then until it's drained.
Yeah, but the reason I think we need an agreement, we need to know who the volunteers are because they're all going to need to sign one of these hold harmless agreements. And then the access issue is going to need to be through Hanley Place property. And I don't know if that's been managed.
If you could come up to the microphone, please, and give us your name and address.
Do you have a property manager from Hanley Place here? And I think that she's in agreement that something does need to be done. I don't know how willing she is to work with us by giving us access through their property to go ahead and do the trap neuter return. But she is here possibly to address that if you need that. The, the area that we're looking at, well, first of all, the trapping is all done in one day. So there's no snow issues, there's no rain issues, there's nothing like that. We try to set it up so that we do the bulk of the cats in one day. We starve them out for a couple of days, we get as many traps as we can, we trap as many as we can. We neuter, we vaccinate, we return as many as we can. Then we work to clean up the stragglers. The property where it is in between the Hanley Place and that particular piece of property, there is an easement in between there where the power poles go that is slightly wooded. And that's what we're looking at, where as far as putting out some small shelters for the cats, which our hopes in putting the shelters out and our knowledge of cats would help draw the cats that are all swarming into her parking lot and climbing on people's cars and things like that, would draw the cats away from the Hanley Place apartments. They're going there because they're looking to get out of the rain, they're looking to get warm on cars and that kind of thing. They're hiding underneath people's cars. By providing the shelters out behind there, it will help draw some of these animals away from that area.
Okay.
The easement would not be for access purposes. The easement would be for utility purposes, for the purposes of utility and not for access.
Yeah, we need, I mean, we need to figure out that access issue if it's a danger accessing other than through Hanley Place.
I know we have a motion on the ground, do you think it should come back to safety?
I'd like to withdraw my motion. I would like to have a motion, I would like to have a go back to safety committee with, after Catherine has been able to write up proper paperwork to try and get this. An agreement to get this.
Program.
Program off the ground.
Did you second it?
I did.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. What time of year is the best time of year to do the cat trapping?
The best time of year is February, before the kittens start.
Got it.
Yeah, so there is, there, there is a possibility that there may be snow. But our volunteers that do the trapping, they understand how to do this. And they're all from the Highlands and we know, we know what it's like up here.
Thank you.
And just the one thing I want to point out, I, I think it was alluded to earlier. Part of the program is to release them back and they're relying on people to feed these cats, which is against, you know, it, it's counter to our city ordinances. So it's, I think it, it, I don't know, it, there's something missing or.
Well, it would be.
Something doesn't line up because we're asking them, we're asking people to feed these cats. And at the same time, the city's saying, don't feed stray animals.
The problem is that, I don't disagree with you, I, I said the same thing at safety, but the problem is that we can't, our animal control won't catch them either. So they're out there anyways, being fed.
I think.
You can't, you're not a, right, 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 I understand.
Well, part of the program is by returning them to their original location. And cats, you know, I know cats, I've had cats my whole life. If there's no food there, they're going to find other food. And that's what's out there available to them. So if these people have been feeding them, well, they have. And we have hundreds of unlicensed cats in Hudson, we just know that already. So by replacing them, you don't, if you look at the whole program, they're not creating the vacuum, which is why this program works. Meaning if you put them back, more cats won't move into that same space. If you take them away, then you create a whole new area for cats to come and hang out. So unfortunately, you can't really remove cats permanently. They just kind of keep coming back to the same space. So it'll be new cats, not the same cats.
Which is why you tip their ears so you know if you already dealt with them.
That's right.
Is that, so is that, we'll refer it back to safety, is that okay with everyone?
Safety with Catherine to, yes.
Everybody okay with that? Randy, you okay with that?
Yeah, I just want, and your memo, we, we set the policy. So I want to make sure that we're in agreement. We can set waivers, we can set exceptions for this to take place. And I just want to make sure that that's the direction that you're given through the policy you come up with.
Yeah, except I need, I mean, again, the way it was presented was just to happen on, you know, can we use city property? And so I guess what I'm understanding is that's how you want to set it up, to be done on this city property, assuming the access can be figured out. And describing the program as it's going to occur on city property and review it.
With liability waivers and insurance.
Yep, and remember, even with the deer management program, a whole committee was set up to address that and it was reviewed every year. So it wasn't just, it took some time to get the bugs out. So, I mean, I think this is a good approach.
Is that okay with everyone? All right.
Could we get it by December fifth, safety meeting?
No, she withdrew.
Uh.
Did you make another motion?
There's a whole, yeah, there's a.
Oh, I forget it's Thanksgiving.
There's a holiday a week, which I.
Well, you know, I work on the holidays.
What was your other motion? Can you read it back?
To send it back to public safety.
Okay, does there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Consider recommendation to expand passport parking to all parking meters. Chief, are you going to address that or is that Mary?
I'll defer to Marty.
Okay. Marty, you're on.
It was recommended by, we had a three-month or two and a half month trial basis with passport parking down in the Phipps Lot right next to Pier five hundred. The program had some, some success. People were commenting about it, they did like it. I did get some other comments from some of the other business owners in town asking if this was going to be expanded because they enjoyed the, or they liked the idea of being able to do that especially for their customers. It was recommended at public safety to expand it. Also with another trial period, instead of having people log in on their cell phones and use their debit or credit cards, there's going to be an option to allow them to, to have this bill put on their regular cellphone bill. So if they needed another fifty cents, they can just have it put right on their cellphone versus having their debit card or other information. So it might make it much easier for people that don't have smartphones. So the recommendation from city council or from public safety was to expand this throughout the whole city to allow everybody that uses meter parking to be able to have this benefit.
The beauty of this too is it's at minimal cost. We don't pay directly, it gets, we get feed through, we get a fee through the, the meter, basically. It's a quarter.
It is, I believe it's twenty-five cents is what it comes off. So in the first month of operation, because it was a small area and it was a relatively slow beginning, we had about sixteen dollars that was taking in through passport parking. And then with the fees and the transaction fees, it came out to about thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents, came back to the city.
And this doesn't eliminate actually dropping the coins in. So people can still drop coin in, people can use their smartphones. Eventually, I think it will evolve into just using your phones or what have you, but it's not going to eliminate the option. Our, our meters are getting to the point where we're, we found another place to find parts, but we're, we're starting to struggle to find parts to, to replace these meters and to fix them. So I think we need to, to try and do something to advance the technology, to put in the, the meters like they have in bigger cities where it covers like ten stalls per block, is a thirty thousand dollars a meter. So to do it this way, it's costing us very little and it, it will help us to, it will help us to reduce the. reduce the frustration of the business owners when customers are getting ticketed for being in their, in their businesses and stuff, hopefully, and, you know.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
How does the meter attendant know that that's been paid for?
Well, what happens is, is that they use smartphones when they issue their parking tickets. So what happens is they come to a meter, and they see that it's expired. They will look up on their smartphone, on the app for passport parking, look at that meter number, and if it's been paid for, it'll say paid, and they just walk on by it.
Okay. So do they normally use smartphones, or is this another thing that we'll have to?
That's what they use now for, they use smartphones to issue the ticket, and then they have a portable printer that they carry on their side.
It's not, we're not changing anything we do every single day.
And this is smart. It'll tell you your meter's about to expire. Do you want to, you know, put more money in? So if you're downtown shopping and decide you want to stop and have a bite to eat, you don't have to run back to your meter. Hopefully, you have money or, it's pretty handy.
I mean, we rolled it out in the PIP slot, and it didn't cost us really, it didn't cost us anything to roll it out.
They provide the stickers for the meters. They provide the signage for downtown. They provide all that interface or whatever you want to call it. Another benefit to it, obviously, is some of the, the restaurant owners can also valet or pay for people's parking. So, in some of the restaurants, I know Pier 500's done it, so.
Want to roll this out in January?
We can. It'll, it'll take some time before we get it up and running, because we got to work with them to get it up and running.
Because we're going on that free meter, or we're going to ask for a free meter again for Christmas time, so that'd be okay from safety?
Yeah, well, of course. Makes no sense to, to
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions anybody has? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Karen, you're on.
Give you an update on the projects. On the 2013 Street Improvement Project, we have the pavement markings down. That would be on Hanley and O'Keefe, Crestview, and the Gateway area. First Street from Buckeye to Elm Street, that will be done next year, now that the weather has turned a little cold. Red Cedar Canyon Valley View, that's the Pinnacle Bay area. There's four houses on that lot. They started the utility work and put in the curb and gutter today. And Bosstrom Office Building, they started doing site grading and soil corrections on that site.
Questions? We're having a parking, kickoff parking update on Monday or Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yep. And you'll get, the people that have expressed an interest, we will be giving, sending you emails on when the meeting is. Any other questions for Karen or comments? Okay, thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Next item on the agenda is consider ordinance eight dash one-three budget ordinance, ordinance. Devin, is there anything that you, everyone's
I don't think anybody has questions on the budget itself. You should have gotten an email this morning, except for maybe Rich, because he disappeared from my email list. But the one change was there were a couple of employees who are not taking the insurance, so it was moved out of that department. I just moved into contingency for now, rather than redo, you know, redo the whole budget. So that's, I don't know if anybody has specific questions, if you want me to go through anything.
You all have your budget information and questions and?
This is the operating
This is the general fund operating budget. You also will be approving the
Debt servicing.
Right, and the debt service as well. And Neil, did they get copies of the budgets as well?
Yes.
Yes, so the ordinance includes the parking utilities, sink, or EMS, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. Those will also be approved as part of this ordinance.
I'm going to move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
T. Winkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I couldn't open this until earlier night. So my question was, I can't, and I don't have my book. The squad car, is that part of our, did we take that this year out of our capital?
That is part of operating. Right now, the budget, the way the Finance Committee proposed, it was one squad vehicle.
Right. And I've been working with Marty, and we were going, he's going to relieve three squads, and we wanted to add an extra squad in for this year's budget.
You, if, depending on what the council, the 40, 49,000, yeah, 49,000 approximately that was put back in for the employees that aren't taking the insurance, you certainly could tell me to designate that.
There was a situation when he took away four squads, I think, last time. Four, we removed four squads last time, and part of that was that he would get two squad, two, he got two SUVs, and he would get two more squads in this budget. And I wasn't at finance and, and when they were talking about budget, and somehow that was missed. So when I saw that being missed, I talked to Marty, and we just, instead of having, getting rid of two more squads, he decided to get rid of three squads. And instead of having one squad in this budget, I'd like to add another squad.
Can you bring it from the next Public Safety meeting to us with a worksheet on it? Because I think you had some other savings also, didn't you?
Yeah, we had savings on.
Basically, what you would do right now, it would be sitting in a contingency.
So we can bring it in through contingency next time?
It could come back in January, whenever, and then it would just take a motion to the council to move it out of the contingency.
Okay, that's fine. I just don't want to miss opportunity.
But if you would bring a sheet back, issue sheet?
No problem.
Okay.
Devin, does this mean that we are approving the fire chief inspector status?
Yes.
But we haven't fully talked that out, have we? Decided what we were going to do?
It was my understanding from the Finance Committee that the recommendation was going to be to hire a full-time chief inspector, fire chief slash fire inspector. The compliance duties will be moved to the police department. Marty will make a determination on how that's going to work within his department. So that was a recommendation from Finance, and that is what is included in this budget.
That's what we, okay.
Once that's approved, then Wednesday, the Fire Board is meeting to take a first look at the job description, depending on what they do there. Jim and I have gone through it. And then if they approve it, then it would potentially come back to you the first meeting in December for approval. And then you would, could then authorize the process to, to take applications. And then the Police and Fire Commission then would take over the process of the actual hiring.
Okay. Sorry, going back to Mary's point with the police department, you're asking for another vehicle, but we're going to still lease vehicles for detectives?
The proposal that Marty brought to the Finance Committee, that is included in this budget for $12,000 to $14,000. So that'd be for, well, detective vehicles.
Detective vehicles, Marty. And how many? Four?
I think we were going to start out with two. Marty had originally proposed four, but the committee said, let's just try it with two of them and see how it goes. So there's, I believe there's $14,000 in the budget for that.
So how many vehicles in the last five years have the police department gotten?
They've gotten
I would say eight, maybe. Well, no, some years they've gotten
We did one in some years, yeah.
We've gotten one, you said five years, so seven or eight. Some years, two, some years, one.
And we've gotten rid of four. It'll be seven, for sure.
And then we got rid of one. I would say we probably got rid of one more than we did.
But through the process of doing what we're doing, we've saved, we've actually stayed within our gas budget and saved on maintenance. So what we're doing is saving money through this in the long run.
And the lease proposal, whatever it ends up being, would come back to the council for approval.
Any other questions from, Randy? Kurt? John?
I'm good.
Lori? No?
Well, only that, I, I'll probably be voting against it, because I voted against the large increase in borrowing. And I just, I have to be consistent with that. I felt like we should have done it at a slower rate, and I respect everyone's opinion otherwise. I think, you know, Devin did a great job with the budget, and all the department heads did very good work. I just feel like it's too large of an increase in one year, and so I'll be voting no.
Okay. Just to respond, to follow up with Lori's saying, of the increase in the property tax levy, and just so you know, Randy Hansen, I have a copy for you, so you don't have to be writing all this down. One third, about, of the levy increase, about one-third is operations, two-thirds is debt.
Mm-hmm.
And the actual mill rate is going up about 32 cents a thousand. Six cents of that is operations, 26 cents is for the capital plan to improve.
And most of it, the loans are for roads?
The bulk of, well,
Equipment.
The bulk of it is for roads, yes. I mean, that's going to be up to you every year. You decide on the capital budget, but that was what the proposal was when you looked at the five-year plan. The bulk of it was for street improvements.
Right. And I'm in favor of good roads. I just think we should have done it at a slower rate, so.
Okay.
I'll move we adopt resolution 20, or ordinance
Do the suspension.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, we did.
I move to adopt 2014 appropriation ordinance number eight dash 13.
Okay, is there, okay, there's a second. Any more discussion, or any discussion on it? I guess we've had discussion on it.
There is a copy available here at City Hall anytime. I mean, it's been here for a month, but we'll continue. That will always be at the front desk throughout the year if people have questions. There were replacement sheets on your table tonight of the ordinance and then the section 15. So those can be inserted in your budget books.
Okay. Do you want
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Defending the budget increase, the more I was thinking about it, I get what Lori's saying, and I totally respect what you're saying, but I also think that it's been years of us taking these, these conservative baby steps that led us to having to finally take a jump and do some things that we need to get done. So it's unfortunate, but it needs to be done sometimes.
Okay.
One other thing, just for, the overall tax rate with all the taxing districts, I think, is up about seven cents, because the county went down, our share of the county went down mainly because of the library, that whole situation getting resolved, at least for one year. So the city's portion, the overall portion won't be 36 cents. It'll just be the seven cents per thousand. But that's, and if anybody in the public, you know, has questions on that, they certainly can call us.
If you look at the, on your budget sheets that you got, the county is going down 2.8%. Majority of that is the exemption that was allowed us for the library, joint library.
Which we didn't have last year.
Which we didn't have last year. So our residents will be paying less money in taxes because of that. Okay, questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Number 15B, consider ordinance nine dash 10 regarding Chapter 99, animals definition change. Ordinance nine dash one-three, issue sheet.
This is just a language cleanup, so that the first part of the ordinance matches what you approved as far as the chicken ordinance.
It's just excluding chickens from livestock.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Roll call.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
T. Winkle?
Yes.
Discussion, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Recommendations and communications from the mayor. If, I don't know if I, I think I would, I got to move this. I would like a recommendation to approve authorized two hours of free parking in downtown meters and issuance of courtesy tickets from 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November 27th, until 8:00 AM on Thursday, January 2nd.
So we'll
Second.
Any discussion?
Just clarification, this is two hours. If you park for more than two hours, you'll get a courtesy ticket. If you park for more than two hours, you will receive a parking ticket. So this isn't, isn't an all-day repast. Just so people, we've had people that didn't understand that, that was there.
I think it's a great idea. I'm glad.
Well, we've, we've done it for, I don't know, 10 years.
Since before I've been here.
Yep. And it's to encourage our folks to shop in downtown, and we're getting, and we give up quite a bit of revenue, but I think it's worth it, and I think the people appreciate it. Downtown appreciates it, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just had one, I was out of town, and I got back, and I noticed that the, there's a, there was an article in the Star Tribune, Star Tribune, the Hudson Star Observer about the library. And I, you know, there, there's two sides to every story, and the issue of our agreement that we had, that we rescinded our agreement to pay the other municipality some, some fees. The agreement was among ourselves. It was among the municipalities. We had no written agreement with the other folks. Just as a point of reference, the county collects about 1.2, 1.1 million dollars a year from the taxpayers of the county for libraries. And that's by state statute, so there's nothing they can do about it. Of that million dollars, 533,000 is collected from our joint library people. Okay? So we're putting 53% of that dollars are coming from our taxpayers. You know what we get back? We get back $82,000 for our library. In other words, we get 7% back. So we're contributing way more than our fair share to the libraries, and I don't feel like we're shorting anyone any money. Also, at the time when that agreement was made, it was at a seven, 72% reimbursement rate, and the county, at their, they didn't ask us, raised it to 100%. So everyone got more money except us. So I, I think it's a, we're not, these folks were given proper notice. I think our agreement, I think we had Catherine look at it. We've had the county look at it, but they have referred it back to see if they can sue us or not, was what it was, or force us to make those payments. So contact your county commissioner, if you would. And I believe that it's not the proper thing that they're trying to do. Anybody else? City council members?
Do we want to try to tackle a official wage increase, wage time of the year, wage, I mean?
We'll put it on the agenda.
It seems like something we should just do because it keeps coming up.
We've always done it in September.
Well, as, through the budget processes, when increases have been discussed. So, so that it can be included in the budget. So when the Finance Committee starts meeting about the budget, any position proposals that are brought forward are brought at that time. If there's any wage increases that are being proposed by specific, that's the process that's done in the past. Finance Committee did recommend that we go back and look at the performance evaluation process, so we could certainly tie that in with that.
Seems like a good idea.
Thank you, John. I think we'll do that.
I have something.
Yes.
Recently, Public Works made a decision to change the snow plowing route around E.P. Rock School. So 13th Street, Freeer, Hoyt, Summer. In the past, Public Works had been plowing in one direction on that block and toward the school property. The school district asked if we would discontinue that policy because it was keeping up too much snow on their corners, causing safety concerns. Tom Zulie mentioned at that time it is extra work for the crews to do that, and Public Works made a decision to change that procedure. Since that time, I have, and I know Tom's received comments.
We approved that, too, didn't we? Didn't the council approve?
No.
Okay.
It's just that internal policy.
It's just an internal policy, and since that time, we've received some feedback. And so what I'd like to suggest we do is just bring it back to full council, our first meeting in December, and provide, you know, a letter went out to those residents explaining to them that they would be, the city would be planning differently. I'd like a letter to go out to those same people and let them know it's going to be on the agenda. They're welcome to come and, you know, present their position to us. But since it didn't come to full council, and there has been negative feedback, I wanted to give those residents a chance to come forward.
No problem with that on the agenda. City Attorney, City Administrator.
Real briefly, City Hall is closed on the 28th and 29th for the Thanksgiving holiday. And because of that, there's an early deadline for the agendas. It'll be that Tuesday, the 26th, because they'll have to go out on Wednesday, the 27th. So just if there's any committee or council things that you want to put on for this, the second, it'll have to be to Nancy and I by the 26th.
Anything else? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.